to order for Monday, March 24th, 2025. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 24th edition of the Dartmouth School Committee. We're happy to have you here. Just a reminder that if you have any kind of electronic devices, cell phones, iPads, or anything else, do please silence them. We also like to remind you that this meeting is being video taped by our own Dartmouth High School media production team headed by Mr. Parati. And we always thank the Dartmouth High Media Club, as well as Dartmouth Community Television for their partnership. And as a reminder, the meetings are rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Meeting will also be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 18 on the following days, Monday and Saturday at 12:00 p.m. and Thursday at 3:00 p.m. Could we have a roll call, please, Ms. Genthner?
Kathleen Amaral?
Here.
John Noons?
Yep.
Mary Beckwith?
Here.
Bess Coughlin?
Here.
Chris Oliver?
Here. Thank you very much. We do have a public hearing scheduled for 6:05 this evening. It was advertised, correct, Mr. Kylie and Dr. Saban McGuire? So at 6:05, we will open the public hearing. In the meantime, though, what we'll do is, if it's okay with the committee, we'll take the approval of minutes out of order, both the regular and executive session minutes of March 3rd, 2025. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the regular session minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Coughlin. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions. One abstention. Motion passes four to zero with one abstention. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of March 3rd, 2025.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation to be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Beckwith. On the motion, any other discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes four to zero with one abstention noted. Thank you. So, leading up into the public hearing for the FY '26 school budget, I will just ask that, once we do open it in a minute, that if you wish to speak on the FY '26 budget, to please approach the microphone here, state your name. And we ask you to please limit your comments to no longer than three or four minutes, in case there is a number of people that would like to speak. If you have comments outside of the FY '26 budget, anything outside of the budget that's on tonight's agenda item, it could be the program of studies, it could be anything else that's listed on the agenda, that will fall under public comment. So, and you can certainly, if you wanted to speak on both, you could do that as well. But just know that anything outside of the budget should fall under public comment. Did I miss anything? Alright, I've got about 20 seconds left, just killing time. And it is 6:05. Do I need a motion, Mr. Noons? I do. Chair will entertain a motion to open the FY '26 budget hearing.
So moved.
Sorry. So we have a motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Amaral. On the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The public hearing is now open for the FY '26 budget. So, at numerous occasions, we've had, the school committees had an opportunity to listen to the school department's proposed FY '26 budget, and now this is your opportunity, if you would like to speak on anything regarding the FY '26 budget.
Good evening, Nathan Silva. And I got to apologize to you guys, because at the last time I came to speak with you, I broke one of my own rules, right? I was a little distracted. My family was already at the girls' basketball game, and I was anxious to get out there. But I always tell my teams, never present a problem that isn't accompanied by a solution. And I came up here and I told you all the reasons why I think you should vote against the draft budget that has been presented, but I didn't tell you what I would like you to do instead. So, I'm gonna use my time tonight to fix that mistake. But, for all the reasons I've mentioned in previous meetings, or other publications, or whatever, that you've seen me communicate in, I think you should vote against the draft budget that currently stands as presented. And instead, I'd like you to consider a budget that does three things. Number one, first and foremost, and most importantly, removes the funding of operating costs from the school choice reserve fund. I think it would be unwise of this committee to spend another dime of that money until such time as the town has a plan in place as to what we're going to do when that money runs out. Over the weekend, I read the article about what's happening in North Andover, and I said a little prayer of thanks that our school administrators had the foresight to save that money when the ESAR grants were coming in. Because if they didn't have that clarity of foresight at that time, we would find ourselves in the same exact position as North Andover finds themselves in today, except it would have happened last year. So, thank you for that foresight. But again, I don't think it's wise to spend any more money until the town has a plan in place as to what we're going to do when that money runs out. Item number two, and I don't want to pretend to be an educational professional, but what I'd like you to consider is, of the nine positions that are being cut on the teacher's side, evaluate whether or not it makes sense for any of those positions to be converted to ESP positions, or teachers assistants, to help with the increasing class sizes that we saw from last year to this year, and that we'll see again from this year to next year with that budget. And then finally, what I'd like you to consider is a budget that also includes all of the requests that were made by the various schools, which was, at one point, it was going to be Page 100. It was in response to Ms. Amaral's question at the draft budget presentation. But when I look at that list, it's not fluff that they're asking for. They're not asking for leather-bound books. They're asking for the nuts and the bolts and the hammers and the nails, and pardon me, I'm a construction guy, but they're asking for the tools that they need to do the job that we've asked them to do. And I think it's important that the budget that's presented to Town Meeting includes the costs necessary to truly provide level services, not level funding, there's a difference there, level services from one year to the next. And I want to choose my words carefully here, but I'm gonna use the wrong words, but I hope you will grant me the grace in my intentions and my words. But it is not this committee's job to prioritize the money of the town, right? We need you guys to tell the town what it's going to cost to run this school system properly, to educate our children. And I think to negotiate ourselves in consideration of the town's financial position is not what we should be doing here. We should let Town Meeting make that decision. We should let the Select Board take their vote, and the Finance Committee take their vote, and ultimately let Town Meeting have that debate as to how we prioritize the funds in town. But we need you guys to tell the town how much it's gonna cost to run these schools properly. So, that's my request. I ask that you vote down the draft budget and include a budget that does those three things, removes the school choice as a funding mechanism for operating costs, considers additional teachers assistants to replace the teachers' positions that we'd be losing, and fully funds the requests of the various schools that were made over the course of the budgeting process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silva.
Hi, I'm Jody Parisi. I'm co-president of the Dartmouth Educators Association. First of all, we would like to just thank Dr. Saban McGuire and Mr. Kylie for having open lines of communication during the budget process, their transparency, we really appreciate it. That being said, we would be remiss if we were not here to voice our concerns. In Mr. Kylie's presentation, he highlighted the population change over the past 10 years, and the increase in key populations here in Dartmouth. The high needs went from 29% to 43%, low income from 17.5% to 30%, and students with disabilities 12.5% to 21%. In addition, the student-to-teacher ratio in Dartmouth places us at .6 above the state average. This means that we're doing worse than the state. Given these numbers, we're concerned that the district response is to cut classroom teaching positions and make classroom sizes higher. In the budget proposal for the '25-'26 school year, there are nine classroom teacher positions being cut. The district has stated that there will not be a significant number of staff losing their jobs due to the realignment of the positions and attrition. While this makes it more palatable, since there won't be faces and names attached to all those positions, we need it to be clear that these are positions that are being cut. They're being lost. In the proposal for next year, I know one of you asked about class sizes with those positions being cut. And there was a slide that was presented that said that the average class size would be 21. This average, I'm assuming, is determined by looking at the total number of students and then dividing them by the number of classroom teachers. It isn't that clear-cut. With the proposal for next year, actual class sizes for grades 1 through 5 vary by school and grade level. At DeMello, class sizes will range from 18 to 23. At Potter, 20 to 24, and Quinn also would be at 20 to 24 students per class. I didn't include kindergarten, because that's unknown at this point. The last point I would like to make has to do with the internal shuffle. When Mr. Kylie showed the slide of the cuts at Quinn and what it would look like next year, it left me very unsettled. The proposal was for kindergarten to remain at five classrooms, first grade would drop to four, second grade dropped to five, third grade and fourth grade remain at six, and fifth grade dropped to five. That represents years of internal chaos, as teachers will be moved between grade levels to accommodate the different class sizes as students move through their elementary school years. I'm just gonna kind of end it by trying to give a real-life example of what it looks like at Quinn many years with this situation. At Quinn, we have a teacher who started several years ago as a kindergarten classroom teacher. The following year, she was involuntarily transferred to second grade. The year after that, she voluntarily returned to kindergarten when a new class was added. Last year, due to the cuts, we needed to lose a kindergarten classroom and shift someone to fourth grade. Unfortunately, when moving people, you have to look at certifications. A kindergarten teacher could not move up to the fourth grade. Therefore, that same teacher was once again involuntarily transferred back to second grade, and a 12-year veteran second-grade teacher was involuntarily transferred to fourth grade. Our teachers and our students deserve better than this. The type of internal shuffle that Quinn will be facing over the next several years makes it very difficult for a teacher to hone their craft, especially with the new literacy program that the district is adopting for next year. Training for that program is occurring on our half-days this school year. Teachers will be receiving training and planning sessions for their grade level in order to hit the ground running for next year. Some teachers will be planning for a grade level that they might not even be teaching next year. So, these are our concerns. Thank you.
Hello, Renee Viera, the other DEA co-president. I'm gonna finish up where Jody left off. So the first thing I'd like to say is that other town departments don't have to cut their staff, that we're aware of, anyway. Other town departments don't fundraise. School choice is like fundraising for our own district. The after-prom had a wonderful fundraiser this past weekend that myself and very few of my colleagues actually attended. But those folks worked really, really hard. Why? To allow our students to have a wonderful experience here in Dartmouth. Our music program has to continually fund itself, as well as athletics, et cetera. In June of '24, the DEA, Jody and I, were promised a better understanding of administrative positions with specific responsibilities relative to the district, school, and grade levels, because we've been continually concerned that there are more admin positions that have been added to the district, and more and more classroom positions being lost. Well, we received a sort of a grid that had, you know, it was a flow chart, if you will, of positions, but we really don't understand who's responsible for doing what. And though it is not our direct experience, when we speak to something, we like to speak it with clarity and with knowledge, and not make mistakes. So, I will just like to remind you that when we opened this school, a little over 23 years ago now, I believe, we opened with around 1,260 students. Our max here is about 1,300. We began with one principal and two assistant principals. And at that point in time, one assistant principal was responsible for grades 9 and 10, as well as facilities. The other principal, assistant principal, was responsible for grades 11 and 12, and for curriculum. Jumping ahead, at this point in time, now, we recognize that students have more needs. We know that, we look at social media and that godforsaken thing called the cellphone, and we look at what's happened with COVID. We have one principal, we have an associate principal that's in charge of curriculum, and we now have two assistant principals, one responsible for facilities, and the other one, right now duties I know include clubs, and I'm not sure if that's also other responsibilities that go along with that. What I'd like to add is, 20 years ago, we had two social workers and then three. Now, we presently have four, which we fully need. We understand. However, our concern is that standards change. Massachusetts adds things, takes things away. But those of us who are educators, we hold our licenses. We know we have to know our craft. We know our standards. Previous superintendent, prior to Ann O'Reilly, and around the same time as her, we had a superintendent and assistant superintendent. It's our understanding, as well as our firsthand experience, that the assistant superintendent's position at the time dealt with evaluations, PDP stuff, employee records, such as graduate credits, et cetera. When Ms. Riley came to be, we lost Ms. Clark as our assistant superintendent a couple of years after, and it was decided that there was going to be an additional directorship position, and that was the Director of Teaching and Learning. And at that point in time, it was Ms. Janet McHenry. Mrs. Riley introduced coaches at that time. Coaches were a benefit at the elementary schools, they helped with curriculum. We had coaches at the middle school, but we had department head and lead teachers at the high school. Department heads and lead teachers now help us run our curriculum. Bonnie Gifford comes along, and we recognize that Bonnie Gifford had one of the highest salaries in town. Then she retired, and, no disrespect to the person holding the position, but now our new superintendent has even a higher salary than the previous one. And right now, we have the assistant superintendent of finance that, over the last three years, has earned a 22% increase in that position for their salary. We're not begrudging folks' salaries, ladies and gentlemen, but it can't always be on the backs of the educators. And it can't, should never be on the backs of the students. And without the people fundraising, that's what it is. And shame on us as a town. I can say that as a DEA president, I can say that as a teacher, I can say that as a mom, and I can say it as a taxpayer. Raise my damn taxes. However, school committee, not off the hook, stop settling for 4.1%. That doesn't help. That's not COLA. Trying to get rid of a bus, and I get it, it's a big town, we need the buses, but FinCom hangs their hat on a darn bus. Good God, we're not asking for enough to run the schools. I want to see the Department of Works beg for staff. As soon as you shut down the water in this town for people, oh, there'll be you-know-what to pay. Sorry. Okay, for the last few years, we continue to lose classroom teachers, but it's not terrible, because it's through attrition. No, it is terrible, because our classrooms get larger. We're not replacing our retirees. For the last two years, we've lost nine. Nine last year, nine this year. We can't rely on teachers to do more, and then begrudge us when we ask for a COLA that our members deserve. Dartmouth has one of the lowest-paying towns in terms of ESPs and secretaries. We can't get nurses, because the subpay is so bad, which the district did recognize and raise up. Apparently not enough, because we still can't get nurse subs, and we have students here with critical daily needs. We have a sped position at Dartmouth High School that we can't fill. We know that teaching is a, it's a job that people are looking to go into as a second career. But if you want to come to Dartmouth, okay, salary's not bad. Throw in the healthcare insurance, throw in what it's gonna look like as a retiree, and you don't want to come here as a second career. You can't afford to do it. And newbies, they're going elsewhere for better pay. We're not gonna be able to replace our teachers. And the more we cut, the harder it's gonna be to get them back. Teachers need to be open and willing to want to come here. That's what we need to do. We need to invest that. Lastly, increasing student needs are not going to be met by reducing classroom teachers and increasing class sizes. And if I may ask a question, do we have a separate public comment after the public hearing? Or is it all wrapped into one?
This is a separate public comment?
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Reader's stage of life. Hello, my name is Zach Tavares. I'm a parent of three girls in the district. I'm on the school council for DeMello, a Town Meeting member, and was on the strategic planning committee for the schools this past summer. I really care about the future of this town, and I don't love public speaking, but I appreciate the forum we've been given here. I want to thank the school committee, Dr. Saban McGuire, and especially Mr. Kylie, for supporting the public education system in an economically and socially challenging time. Dartmouth has done an incredible job of doing a lot with a little. The leaders in this room, in this town, our public servants, our educators, all workers in the school district, from maintenance, food service, transportation, have given everything they have. In a world that gets more expensive by the hour, our public servants keep us all going, but we're headed for a wall. Put simply, what's projected for the school's budget annual increase does not keep pace with actual costs. It does not keep up with inflation, it does not serve our students, it does not leave room for growth. Anyone living in the world right now feels a similar squeeze. Macro pressures from the pandemic, hiring, and retention have put a strain on budgets across the state, not just here at home. Costs are rising. If we don't act now, we risk driving away our most valuable assets, our leaders, our teachers, our police, to find greener grass elsewhere. We can't take on more service reductions in our schools. As residents, we need to understand how the town defines the red line. What's the minimum number of staff per student that we'll allow? The maximum number of students in a class? The minimum spend per student? Right now, we're 270th of 322 in spend per student. It's 13% below state average. It feels like we're already at that red line. I'm here to keep pushing for our green line, a level of service we aspire to achieve with added resources and staffing, pushing us towards the goals laid out in the school's strategic plan. I'm worried the budget currently proposed addresses only a quarter of the problems our schools currently face. A 4% increase forces us to choose between ESAR positions, service reductions, unfunded budget requests, staffing to meet state averages. As a couple people have said tonight, these are really all vital line items. For example, to match the state's average, a pair of professionals per student, Dartmouth would need to hire 35 new ESPs at an estimated cost of $914,000. It feels like we're undershooting here. I know this might feel like pie in the sky to cover some of these shortfalls, and I don't think we have a magic pill to make it all go away, but to me, it feels more pie in the sky to pretend these issues don't exist. We have to work together to solve this very real issue. I think there's a much larger desire to support public education, and frankly, to support an increase in town service funding for all departments than what has been anecdotally discussed. What's good for the schools is good for everyone. Dartmouth citizens know that and want a chance to prove it. I implore the leaders in this community, elected, appointed, hired, social leaders, coaches, business owners, to be solutions-focused, cognizant of the reality of our economic environment, and driven by accountability, to lead, to come together as neighbors, and to support public education. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I want to start with saying thank you so much for all that you do for our students of this community. My name is Robin Delafonte. I have three 5th graders at Potter Elementary, my happy place. My husband and I moved here about 10 years ago with a gaggle of babies. We moved to this town on purpose for the school system. And we're feeling a little uneasy watching it buckle right before our eyes. Our teachers are fighting for benefits that I feel like they shouldn't have to fight for, and now they're fighting for jobs. Teachers in my world are my everything. They're my village. They're big, humongous parts of my village, and becoming my friends. They're not just educators in our community, they're our community members. They live here. They have students, children as students in this community. They go to the schools. These are our people. We've got to support our community. I beg you to please fund our teachers, protect their jobs. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I am tall enough. I wasn't sure. Sitting over there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective on the fiscal year '26 budget. And I also appreciate all of the hard work and dedication you put into serving our town. I stand here as a product of Dartmouth Public Schools, a taxpayer in town, a mom to a fifth grader at DeMello School who happens to sit in a classroom I sat in 30 years ago and a classroom my mom sat in 60 years ago, which maybe is a bit of warm nostalgia or perhaps really troubling, but that's a conversation for another time. And I will admit, the last school committee meeting I was in was quite a while ago when I was the student representative to the school committee 20-some-one years ago. But I feel moved to be here today because I really think that Dartmouth has a reputation for investing in public education. It's a reason I moved my own family back here and boomeranged back after getting my own higher education. And I'm concerned that the budget before us does not reflect that priority. So I want to offer a word of encouragement to this committee and to the school department, the school department in particular, to ask for what you actually need to do the work. I would hate to see our school department put ourselves on sale and carry a burden that's not yours to carry alone. I really think that the budget should reflect our town's reputation, our competitiveness, and our future. And I think the budget before us again expects our students and educators to disproportionately do more with less. Our town's per-student spending, as you know, is below state average across every category. And that's a fact that's on its face could seem like a good thing, how efficient. But to me, it reflects a deprioritization of something that should be at the top of the list. I think a budget is a statement of our values. That's true for our own personal budgets that we have to create to run our homes, take care of our families, maybe spend, and save for the future. That's also true for our collective budget as a community. And a budget that eliminates staff positions, increases class sizes, and therefore reduces dedicated attention for each student, and insufficiently funds what school leaders and learners need, asks our children to shoulder a fiscal burden that is the responsibility of us, the adults in the community, to carry. The fiscal cliff we're facing as a town is clear, and it's been thoughtfully articulated by this committee and others. What's less clear to me is the plan for how to close that gap. And it can't be to fund our students less. Investing in our students and schools is not only the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do. And as a parent and a person who is deeply invested in our town, I hope that we'll support a budget that's sustainable, fair, and reflective of the high standards and high-quality education our community expects and all of our kids deserve. I hope you know that you have a lot of support in the community, our school department. So please ask for what you need in school committee. I hope that you will listen and do what's best for our town. Appreciate you very much.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Kavanaugh Murphy. I'm a lifelong resident of Dartmouth, graduate of the schools, and a parent of a recent grad and a current senior. I only have two months left with kids in this school district, but that does not mean it's time to stop caring about what happens in our schools. And this is an important message for everyone in the town. I'm speaking up tonight in support of the next generation of families and students who are rallying behind this cause. Our school system simply cannot maintain the quality we've come to expect without a long-term funding solution. We need to move away from one-time funding sources like school choice to cover annual operating costs. I know you know this. And we need to stop cutting what the district knows it needs before the budget goes before the select board and town meeting. I urge the school committee to continue fighting for the best interests of our students, which is undeniably what is best for the town's future as a whole. We can't keep cutting staff only in the school department, and we need to pay people what they're worth. And that includes a reasonable benefit package that makes them take the job in the first place. Lots of people in the room tonight, as I'm sure you're all aware, are others like me who grew up here and came back to raise their families here. We can joke about the fact that people don't leave. It's true. But there's a reason for it. People like living here. We all want a community that we want to return to. Let's fund our schools so the next generation doesn't flee this place. I urge you to listen to what all of those who are much more knowledgeable about the details than I am, who have spoken tonight, and vote down this draft budget and help us send a message to all town departments and residents that our schools must be fully funded. 4% is not enough. We can pay more taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on budget? Going once? Going twice? Time is now 6:33, and I am closing the public budget hearing.
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Mrs. Ammaral. On the motion, any other discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your comments. They certainly mean something to us, or at least to me. I have no doubt to my colleagues as well. And we look forward, I look forward to a discussion continuing. So next up on tonight's agenda under the public hearing is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items? You may do so with just the same idea, approach the podium. If you would like to, we really have commented on the budget this evening, but if there's something that, you know, outside of it that you may have missed, please feel free to step forward, introduce yourself, and you have two to three minutes.
Hello. Renee Bierer again. I would just like to comment on the fact that we're going to be looking at the program of studies this evening. And for the last few years, we've pointed this out to Dr. Sabah McGuire, that there have been some changes to the program of studies regarding expectations for each of the graduating year, so senior class, so many credits, juniors, sophomores, freshmen. So the concern we have is, that we have had, is that there's some confusion as to, you know, what students might need at each grade level. But more so, when we look at budgetary constraints potentially and looking at pathways, just what, I don't know what's being presented this evening, but just to try to keep in mind that we want to be able to offer students pathways that are attainable, that, or unsustainable, so that they're able to actually begin something freshman year and be able to carry that out through senior year. We know at the high school, our class sizes are a bit different than the middle or the elementary schools because of the electives that we offer. So that might cause a particular class to run at 14, which pushes others at 30 or 32. But, you know, the school has done a very good job trying to offer as many electives as possible. But when we look at pathways and we look at electives, and then we look at classroom sizes with the staff that we have, it's, it's just a little bit scary. So I just wanted to put that out there for folks. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no takers, we're going to continue on the agenda. At this time, happy to introduce our new student rep to the school committee. I believe her name is Haley. So welcome, Haley.
Thank you.
And if you would like to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and what's going on at Dartmouth High School.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So I'm Haley. As you stated, I have been, I'm a member of this for, throughout the year, but I've unfortunately been busy with sports and extracurriculars, so this is actually my first time sitting here. I want to start by saying thank you to the committee for having us do this again. It's been a great opportunity for us to sit and listen and then get a perspective and get a, talk about it with each other. And I want to say thank you to the speakers again for just being able to speak out for the community and for us. Because while I do have a seat here, not everybody does. So it's good for, it takes a lot of guts, and we appreciate what you guys do. Just an update, we're halfway through March and closing in on quarter three for the next few weeks. Spring sports have started, which is exciting to see all our athletes come back and compete, as well as new incoming freshmen. Congratulations to Charlotte French for taking home Dartmouth's finest. We had a total of 15 contestants compete, and it was a great show, very diverse, and congratulations to all the people involved. Last week, we celebrated World Language Week. Our World Language Department hosted different activities throughout the week, and each day had a theme. There was announced winners over the morning announcements. It's a great way to bring our school community together to celebrate different cultures. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges visited Dartmouth High School last week. We want to thank Dartmouth High School's staff for their hard work on making it a successful visit, as well as all of the student representatives that were asked to speak to them as well. Two weeks ago, members of the TEDx presented their projects focused on keys to unlocking a new perspective. So want to shout out to all of them, as well as Ms. Souza and Ms. True for organizing this again. AP art students had their show at the Dartmouth Cultural Center. DHS hosted a blood drive last week with Ms. Cohen and the students' health club, so we want to thank them. They were all very successful events, so thank you to everybody. And just to remember that Dartmouth Theater Company is hosting Comedy Bingo fundraiser on March 29th. So tickets, so be careful for that via Parent Square to purchase. Thank you for taking the time to recognize me. And again, thank you for all the comments to the teachers.
Thank you for the presentation, Haley. Any questions for our student rep?
Thank you.
As always, you're more than welcome to stick around. But we understand if you need to leave.
Thank you so much.
And next up, we have a spotlight on kids, the best part of the meeting. Dartmouth Middle School, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sabah McGuire.
And I am promptly going to turn it right over to Principal Rossi, who I see, I know, this is so exciting. Yeah, we're looking forward to your presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to put the spotlight on our unified sports program. Under the direction of Bill Garcia and with the help of many, many others, we've expanded beyond basketball to now include unified bocce and unified cheerleading. Temple Mitchell, one of our coaches, has prepared a short video to show our programs in action. And after we view that, I promise that I'm going to get out of the way, and you can hear from our players and our coaches and get a better understanding of the positive impact this program has had on DMS. And it's just a program we are incredibly proud of. But before we do that, I do want to put a plug in for Once Upon a Mattress that will be performing April 11th and 12th at the Dartmouth Middle School, so please come on out. Mr. Bernado and the cast have been working very, very hard to give us a good show.
We could maybe have Bill Garcia, our head coach, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Bill Garcia. I'm the social worker at Dartmouth Middle School. I was hired there four years ago, and I'm excited to come back to my community. And what we're doing, a lot of special happenings at Dartmouth Middle School. We couldn't do it without the students. It's really about the students and building an inclusive community. Well, you know what? Let me say that. It's about the community because it's not just the students. We also want to spotlight our amazing staff that have helped and really supported the program from day one. I wish Temple Mitchell was here because she's one of the backbones of this program. Together, four years ago, we sort of reunited. We were high school friends, and now we're working together with an opportunity that's rather special. And we get to share our time with a wonderful group of students, really promoting the word of inclusion. It's something that we take very seriously, and it's passion. And we talk to the kids about being passionate, and we couldn't ask for a better young group of students who really commit a lot of their time and effort to being part of this program. Without them, you know, we just wouldn't be able to grow like we're growing. A lot, what we do is about promoting involvement through sports, building those friendships. A lot of my friends, I remember, I met them on the baseball fields over at Crapo or playing the football at Bunwood Park. But that's where a lot of those relationships are built. And then these students have gone beyond and above and beyond, and they really live the message of inclusion. And without them, you know, it just helps, they help push the message forward. And it's not just about sports. We've included the program to go beyond that, and it's working into the hallways. It's in the classrooms. Just this past week, we had our first unified basketball game against Westport. And, you know, we have 13, 14 students on the basketball team. We've expanded. I tried to put together a cheerleading squad last year, and it's more than tripled this year. And from day one in September, every time I ran into Olivia in the hallways, she'd ask me, "When are we cheering? When, when are we doing cheerleading again?" So she helped drive to make sure that it was bigger and better than it was last year. So they definitely contribute to, to driving this bus. So we have 13, 14 students on the basketball team, 17 cheerleaders. We've increased, we've had more staff involved this year than ever before. We've had We've had staff members volunteering to monitor cheerleading, help move that forward. We had staff members volunteer to help make posters. After school, one of the after-school activities, Arts and Crafts, they took a handful of posters so that the students in that activity can kind of help make the posters. It gave them exposure to what it was for. They became attached to the game. At the game on Friday, we had over 300 students in the stands and it just keeps building from year to year. This is our fourth time holding a Unified Basketball game on the courts at Dartmouth Middle School. Four years ago, Mr. Rossi said, "You know what, Mr. Garcia? That's the first time that that gym has held a competition since the high school closed." So we're opening up the community, we're involved with other agencies, other schools. The clip there showed Unified Bocce, which we hosted a special event against the Dartmouth Police Department. And every year, Unified Bocce wraps up with, actually, all our Unified seasons end with the staff participating. And each year, the list of staff members that get involved keeps growing. They've been the backbone of helping us kind of support this initiative. We have some, we haven't really done any external fundraisers. We kind of, the staff have kind of helped financially support the program through different initiatives. They showed some clips there, we call it the Half Day Cafe, where on half-days, as a group, we kind of do our own Uber Eats, where we put together the order, go to local businesses and they kind of help us financially. And that's kind of helped support the program. We've done a fundraiser there called Puzzle Palooza and that's something that the staff look forward to, that Mr. Rossi and Mrs. Deekus every September say, "When's Puzzle Palooza, when's Puzzle Palooza?" They're the two-time defending champs and that should be noted. So they get excited about that and it's just building that community and the excitement. And it's, it's not just sports, it's about just being part of something big. This past week, we had a Spirit Week where we did a Green Day initiative. It was the first time that Mr. C.'s Pals program was able to set up a spirit shop where they sold green items the week before. They took orders, they packed them and then they delivered them. It's an vocational opportunity for the students. And it was, it was a break even monetarily, but the knowledge and the experience for the kids was tremendous. It was the first time that they were able to interact. You know, they do a great job on Wednesdays, serving coffee at the Kindness Cafe, but this was the first time that they could interact with other students and offer, you know, the spirit shop and often the interactions there. And beyond that, Mr. C., if you want to pass around the work samples?
Absolutely.
And it goes into the classroom, so we're bringing it into the classroom. This is a work sample that the students who, in the Pals program, broke down the sales. They were able to count up how many items we started with, how many we sold, what we sold them at, what the profit margins were. So it was a nice, practical vocational experience for the students as well. So, you know, those are some of the things that we are doing. And I could talk for the next 20 minutes, but I want to actually open it up to the students because like I said, they are the heart and soul and they really help drive this. So with us, we have Victor Morenci, we have Michael Seamus, Maddie Paveo, Olivia Sorensen, and Addison Leary. We also have Bennett Ross. Bennett might be a little camera shy, but usually, but usually wherever Victor goes, we know that Bennett's not going to be too far behind because Bennett and Victor have formed a really nice friendship. And it's apparent, not only on the basketball court, but in the hallways as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the students, if there's anyone that wants to join the mic or if there's question.
I did have my paper, but it's on here. Hi, I'm Addison Leary and I help in the Learning Partners Program and I'm on the Unified Basketball Team. I think that activities and programs like these really do unify our school. For instance, I believe on March 15th, our first game was against the Westport Wildcats. The bleachers were full, students decked out in all green and all showing support. It was really heartwarming to see so many, so many students cheering on our Unified Team and our cheerleaders, of course. In the Learning Partner Program, I went to Bennett's gym class and this ended in trimester two for me. A fond memory of Learning Partners, I think that really makes a difference, is when I went to the fitness room with Mr. Levitt, our adapted gym coach, and Bennett. He showed me all his cool workouts and how strong he is. Or like when I got to see his mini ninja warrior course that he crushed. I can't believe they bring, I mean, I believe they bring our whole school together and I hope we continue to support and grow these programs.
If no one wants to speak, maybe we could open up to some questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. So first of all, thank you for the wonderful presentation, the great video by Temple. What a fabulous, wonderful program, the Unified Sports. And it seems like every time we hear about it, it's just continuing to grow and it's continuing to gather steam. And the fact that you're able to now, you're bringing this into the classroom and doing some of these skills, vocational skills, it's just phenomenal. It sounds like, are you, is everyone enjoying themselves when they're out there and playing these games? Ah, we have a visitor, all right. So hats off to you, to everyone that's involved in the program and especially to you, the students. So great, great job. And it's just, it's so nice to hear the positive things that are happening at Dartmouth Middle School, for sure. So I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues, Mrs. Amaral.
Okay, I'm going to do this without tears. Hi, B. So handsome. I guess I'll start, so I, like a broken record, I have a child with a disability, who wasn't, did not participate in Unified, but I am so impressed with the programming. And just, we are very lucky to have support and the leadership at the middle school, as well as just having Mr. Garcia here. Mr. Garcia, even before working for the town, was a champion. Each year, the Special Parent Advisory Council would host a very large resource fair and became quite a rivalry in the high school level with the Unified Dartmouth High School basketball team playing against the unnamed rival each year during that event, which really brought the community in. And I just want to say to all of you, you know, there's a phrase in the disability community, more alike than different. And I just want you to know the difference that you make in breaking a barrier because not everybody is comfortable figuring out how to communicate with a classmate that might not be able to speak, might use an augmentative device, might have some trouble running as fast as you. But by being a leader and stepping into the roles that you've stepped into, all of you, you're learning from one another. You're breaking barriers for other students to recognize that all students are more alike than different. You're making a difference to those siblings. I've got two of them at home who might not have joined the Unified, but boy, do you bring pride to them to know that you care about someone who's like their brother or sister at home. So I hope you continue, I hope you join the high school, continue with the middle school with all of the amazing programs that are happening with Unified, that you continue. Because it's all about, I made myself little notes and of course it disappears. You know, it starts off with just having fun, it becomes something that's familiar, you get to know one another. And then all of a sudden, you realize that you have something in common. And the goal here is, you know, education, the goal of education is to prepare us to live out in society as a community. And when we can do that by seeing ourselves in other people that may be different or have different needs than us, will set you up for success throughout school, throughout college, trades, jobs, church, everything that you will encounter. You're better off for having participated in such an activity and learning that you're all more alike than different. So I applaud you and I appreciate your time tonight and I look forward to everything that has to come in the near, you know, in the future. Sorry.
And I'm supposed to follow that?
Passionate.
No problem, nice job. Congratulations to everyone. I've watched on DCTV when the high school has had certain events with the Unified Sports and they're always enjoyable to, not only to watch, you know, the students, but the helpers perform and play and help them out and such. So I say thank you for taking time out of your, everybody's got busy schedules, but what you do to help make everyone else's life just a little bit better says a lot. And I congratulate and I thank you for that.
And I don't know if I could add much to my colleagues to my right, who said it so well, other than I think you've had this opportunity to do two things. Learn about teamwork and learn about leadership. And those are two really important life skills. And I think, as Mrs. Amaral said, I think you've learned that fun often turns into something more meaningful. And so I applaud you for looking for those meaningful things to do. And I hope you will continue to do that as you progress through your school years with us. I'm very proud of you all and proud to be a member of this community. So thank you very much.
And I really can't say it better than my colleagues, so I won't belabor it, but I am also proud of you and proud of your role modeling and inclusive community. Thank you for sharing.
How about a big round of applause? Just want to thank Mr. Rossi and Dartmouth Middle School.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder if they want to take their data.
Mr. Rossi?
Some important data about sales.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome, thank you.
What a fabulous presentation. And next up, under Presentations, DHS Program of Studies, Dr. Sabah Maguire.
Yep, and I see Mr. Shea and Mr. Silver making their way to the podium. I know they've prepared a presentation for you this evening and I hope that it clearly demonstrates what the expectations are here at Dartmouth High School for our students who are, I would say, I would say something that I think became clear when the MCAS test went away as a graduation requirement, as a CD. And it's that Dartmouth High School's Program of Studies is one that the state actually holds up as an exemplary programming path. So with that, we'll hear from Mr. Shea and Mr. Silver.
Yeah, talk about following the Beatles, right? Taylor Swift era's tour. I'm not as engaging as that, I apologize to start. So this is our Program of Studies. We're very, very proud of this document that we've presented to you. I do have to thank Bridgette for all of the hard work that she's put into. It's umpteen hours, umpteen revisions. I don't even know the number of revisions we've had, so. And it's countless meetings with lead teachers and going back and really taking in the ear of the community, of our own community within about what is best for the students at Dartmouth. So I just want to say thank you. Just so you know, it was designed with the strategic plan in mind and we want to be mindful of that and we really are proud of the strategic plan and we're trying to do everything with that as we move forward. Just a quick overview, there's been adjustments, it's really been to make it user-friendly. You'll notice at the end, there is a subsection for our incoming freshmen. It takes all of the documents and makes it very succinct for just our freshmen. We really want to support that transition. You're going to hear a lot about supporting the transition of our freshmen throughout, but really that whole subsection is really just to take out all of the other verbiage that might, our students might get lost, that really don't understand what a Program of Studies is, as opposed to you're taking this class next year or you're taking this class next year. When we start putting in choice, which is great in student voice, that's phenomenal, but sometimes our freshmen, we really want to support them. So the last pages are really designed for our freshmen as they transition into us. And really it is, it's designed to be user-friendly. Whether this is your first child or your fourth child, you should be able to be able to access this at the same level of understanding. We do want to highlight some documents, some stuff that is in the document, though, that has not changed, but we really want you to understand why we put it in there and the reasoning behind it. Academic probation is different at the high school than it is in any other grade level. We are credit-based, right? You need the credits to move forward and we talk about what those credits mean and how you transition forward. And again, with our freshmen, what we know is for every, every class that you fail, you're that much likely to be a dropout. So we want to really support our students as they go through this and we really want to make sure they understand that we want to stay on track for graduation and that is our main goal. We want to get to 24 credits and a maximum of 27 credits. That is our goal all of the line and we want to keep you on that trajectory as well. The other big thing is, is the course level change. We really want to understand that students that have, they do have options to change levels, but it is really a short window and that is really one week after the term one report card. After that, you're too deep into the, into the course to really take in a new class, right? You can't join a class like 70% in or 25% in because you have that foundation that you don't have underneath you. So those are two big, important parts of it. As well as recognizing some other parts of the document is our SEAL of Bili literacy. Ross, two months, a month ago, talked about the competency determination and the impact of that. There is still an understanding that students have to take MCAS, right? The ballot initiative was designed so students could not have the graduation requirement, but we are still mandated that all students take MCAS starting tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, our 10th graders, you will be taking MCAS in ELA. And that's great, it's great for us, hold us accountability, we make decision-making off of that. But also there are important parts of that, is that if you want to get our SEAL of Bili literacy, that's a really, really great recognition on your diploma, that you are now, you're biliterate and that shows that you've done well in the ELA component of it, as well as the foreign language component of it. So we really want to recognize that. Also, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is another big component of that. We recognize our students at breakfast for that, that is a still part of it. So taking the assessment is really important because you can earn credit towards that. One of the other big things is, is I don't know an area high school that can compete with our AP offerings. We offer 27 AP classes. So, and we encourage our students then grade nine, if you, to really start that process, right? And you start that with like even just the AP, and not just, I apologize for that, but taking AP Computer Science Principles, that is designed for freshmen. We really want our students to start really working towards those AP credits and working that. But 27 AP offerings and literally everything from music theory to AP Calc in AB. And if you have a student that has taken Calc, AB, or BC, you understand those differences and the difficulty it is. But we offer so many offerings for our students and that is, when people talk about why come to Dartmouth High, you can't compete with that. You cannot compete with the offerings that we offer. And that goes from everything from our UA, every department has it, our UA department has it, just as much as our English department, our math and our science. And we're very fortunate to have such a vast AP offering. Also, in that same way, we have our AP Capstone, which is a really nice, which is a really, really nice way to stand out in the application process for colleges, if that works for you. That's taking seven AP classes, that's an abundance of AP classes, but you get understandings of research, you get the understandings of statistical analysis. You also get those like, those comp and literature understandings as well. It's a really rigorous pathway, but it's a nice pathway to offer for our students. And again, it makes you stand out and that makes that Dartmouth diploma that's already in my mind up here, it just rises a little bit more. So you're talking about students that might have a SEAL of Bili literacy on their diploma and a Capstone in a Dartmouth High diploma and we're very fortunate that we- And we're very fortunate that we can brag about how valuable our diploma is and what our students offer with that. Some other things is, we do have a pathway of certification. That's our early childhood program. We're very, very fortunate that with Polly Gilbo in her program, our students get to go out every day on to real-life experiences in childcare and working towards it. I've talked to students who have graduated and when they go to college, they have the opportunity to make like $35 an hour instead of minimum wage because they have the certification. They also get college credits as well in that pathway, too. So just having this little piece in your back pocket is really something that's really special for our students. We just updated our music theory computer lab. So our AP music theory, it's a mini MacLab now. That's a big help through Donors Choose and Mr. Parati and supporting that program. But we have a, it was actually spotlighted in NIAS. One of the people said, "I can't wait to bring this back to my school" and really worked towards that. So that was really nice. And then the last thing is, is our co-curricular activities. Our schedule does get tight. We have seven offerings, five classes a day. Sometimes our students don't have all the offerings that they can make into their schedule. So we do offer some of our students the ability to take, when they take co-curricular marching band or constant band or orchestra and all of those, they do have an opportunity to opt out of that PE class. We encourage PE first and we really believe that as a variety. But if you cannot make it into your schedule, this is an offering for our students that tries to make their schedules that are very, very jam-tight, which is great. We're really proud of that. Our students want more classes. They want more and they beg us for more. And again, I believe in someone that had a dad who was a PE teacher. I believe in PE, so it's not putting down PE. But our students who march every day and work in that parking lot through all of the winter and the spring and the fall and the summer, they really are working and getting that physical activity in as well. So we really want to make sure that we understand that there is a difference. That's really for our juniors and seniors. Okay. She was going to kick me because if I didn't say juniors and seniors only, I had to make sure I got that. So some of the, and then our internship and dual enrollment program. And then again, Bridgette really, really focused on this year doing that freshman supplement that really focuses just for the freshmen so they don't have to weed through, what does this mean? What does that mean? What is a prereq? What is all of that? This is just for our freshmen. So we're really proud of that section as well of it. Okay, so there are changes in the document, though, that we really want to talk about. One of the changes is that we noticed that the update in the school committee-approved handbook was when we switched over from block scheduling to our seven-period scheduling. There was transition. One of the things that it didn't include is the BIT program that we have added. So that's our Business Information and Technology, that amazing program that Mr. Parati runs. And we're really lucky to have that offering. So we really needed to make sure that we included that as an updated version of that. So this is the trajectory, and Mr. Vera said, like, yes, there is, we've really worked towards figuring out what that looks like and how that looks. And we've really found a system that we think we're really proud of. And it allows us to get those computer science credits that we really believe in, that Mass Core believes in, that is essential to student growth, but also allowing for students to take stuff like, take some of the business classes that we offer, whether it's marketing, accounting, or any of those other offerings that we offer in that world. And it still gives them some choice of electives as well. We still have three and a half credits of electives. That's really nice. So we follow the Mass Core standards and we really try to follow that. But we still want options for our students. We believe in voice and choice. And again, we go back to designing this towards the strategic plan. Student voice and choice is a big part of that. And we want to be able to make sure we have that offering for our students in voice and choice. So departmentally, we made some changes. Freshman year, we've piloted for the last two years, pre-AP English. Our first year of the pilot, after that, we came back to the table and said, you know what? We piloted pre-AP I and we said, you know what? That's not rigor enough for our Dartmouth High student. We need to start at pre-AP II. So all freshmen, it'll be heterogeneous. It'll be at an honors weight. So if students transition in, every student will be taking pre-AP English nine next year. They'll come in with that. It'll be at an honors weight for our students. So there's no differentiation. A student comes in two years later and they took an honors class, they're not, our students aren't penalized by a student's transcript that transitions in. That's why it's at an honors weight. We are adding electives. They will be run at a sufficient number. So these are offerings that we're going to offer. If we have a significant interest or sufficient interest, we will run it. If not, we don't. We do this every year. So some classes that our English department really decided that they wanted to run here this year was contemporary American poetry at a CCR level, feminist literature at a CCR level, sports reading and writing. That's really important. One of the conversations we have with our English department and Mr. Higgins a lot is really getting our young men reading and getting them engaged in reading. We know that a lot of our females are way more engaged in reading than our young males. So this is an opportunity and not saying sports is a male-dominated field. There is, I'm a UConn girls' basketball. I'm sad I'm not watching them right now at eight o'clock. So I want to be very clear on that. But it is, we are trying to target to getting some of our young males in there. Shakespeare and the Art of Being Human, CCR, and then Dystopia, CCR. Again, they'll run at a significant number if we can run it. We will not run it if we cannot get enough interest in it. Our BIT department, we've added two honors levels. So Broadcast Production Honors and Programming Gaming Development Honors. You're going to hear this common theme as I talk, that students don't choose classes sometimes because there's not an honors weight to it. And that's unfortunately sad, but they understand the competitive nature of what they're at. So they understand the competitive college process. They understand the competitive of scholarships. They understand all of that. So we want to add some honors weight to some of our classes. And you're going to see that on the next slide as well. So our Science Department, we're adding the pre-AP pilot this year. So as we piloted the English and we realized we needed to ramp it up, we want to pilot it before we push it forward again. So we're going to run pilot sections of our pre-AP bio. And then in our Engineering, Architectural Design, and Robotics, we're adding sections for one, two, and three that are at the honors weight. Engineering is one of the most popular college majors. And I can't tell you how many times students say, "I have applied for an engineering major." I've never taken an engineering class at Dartmouth High because I didn't want to have, I didn't have the competitive, it wouldn't have been a competitive transcript. So we really thought it was really important to add those honor sections to it. This is just a verbiage thing that we added. So as you know, the state has added a civics requirement for every high school. So if you walk around the high school, you're going to see posters everywhere about, talking about school lunches, talking about air conditioning, talking about different things. But Mr. Kylie has been interviewed a number of times by students about the civics project. It's a really great thing because it teaches students to have really, like intense dialogues with adults and really professional conversation. So we added the verbiage that US II is where that lives. And they're in the middle of that right now. So it's really fun. You'll see surveys throughout our building. You'll see QR codes on the walls for our students to really gain surveys and information and take that data and then really put together like a report based off of that. And that's actually a group of students working on that. And then in the UA, the only thing we added was that we learned that if you want to be an architecture major, you really need to take Drawing II. And that's feedback from our past graduates that are in those areas. So we really want to say to students that if you're going to be an architecture major, you really not only have to have some of those mass sciences, you really got to have those art classes as well. So we added that verbiage into the document as well. In our Wellness Department, we piloted this year what we call RefRep. It's an MIA sponsored. I swear, I didn't realize this, that I was wearing an MIA shirt. But the MIA has really sponsored it. They funded this for us this year for the number of licenses. There is a critical need for officials in sports right now. And it's unfortunate that there's not enough. We, if you notice, sometimes we have to play on Thursday night for football games because there's not enough officials. So you can play a Thursday night. We have now bye weeks in sports because of that. There are not enough officials. So this is designed to get officials, this is actually a Peyton Manning-backed program as well. But it's really designed that they can do any subvarsity. So you can do JV and below. You could do DYSA. You could do DYAA. It's really getting you the certifications. You get about three certifications. It's student-driven. And it's a really great offering for our students as well. And again, it's in partnership with the MIA. Dr. Baldwin was in our school about a month ago. We do what we call the Car Wash, if anyone knows ESPN. You have the Car Wash where you go to different things. So he did a podcast. He did the TV studio. He really got, he did a newspaper interview. So we really had him in talking about it and he really highlighted the impact of this. And really, it helps our students understand that transition of perspective of what it's like to be an official. And you can see that and it really helps build that sportsmanship as well for our students. So we really want to promote that even more. We kind of stole the model from Taunton as well. And in their first year, their students made over $11,000 officiating. So we stole that model from them and really trying to support that. I know I speak fast. I apologize every time. But I'm here for questions. I'm here to discuss any questions you have on this. I do want to give, again, Bridgette a big shout-out. This is a lot of work that she does to put this together. I get to speak and she does all the hard work. So and she can answer your questions, too.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. That was a great presentation. Before I offer my thoughts, over here.
Yeah, impressive, very impressive. I can't believe all the opportunities you offer the students. One thing I was confused about was the graduation requirements. It seems like from year to year, there's a little bit of change and a little bit of back and forth. And can you explain why that is?
Yeah, so when I came on, right when I came on is when we added the BIT department. So we were trying to figure out how to add that, really, that computer science requirement that we want to have that is essential to like mass computer science standards, as well as trying to give students options and voice and choice. And we've kind of played with the credits to try to figure it out. So moving forward with 29 and beyond, this is where we found that is like our comfortable zone of that one credit of computer science. It's not the only credit that you can take. You can take more than that. But we really had to figure out how to include this without taking away choices from our students and giving them options. So we really wanted to make sure, but we also didn't want to take away from the business side of things because business is one of the top majors as well in college. And we wanted to make sure our students had those offerings as well.
Okay. And I also love that you're doing the student refs, so the students will have an opportunity to make money or right out of school and even while they're in school and also with early childhood education. I think that's terrific offerings and internships and yeah, it's an impressive program.
Thank you. All you can do is get money in our students' pockets, right?
It's going to have to happen.
Ms. Beckwith?
Just one question. Can you tell us a little bit about how dual enrollment works?
I'm going to have Bridgette slide in on this one.
So dual enrollment is available to any student that has at least a 2.0 GPA in the school. We like to have the students take the courses on a college campus traditionally after the school day. The reason after the school day is so that the students are able to work with our rotation of schedules and we can't have them missing a class here in order to go sit on a college campus. We also have a requirement that if the class is offered here in the building, let's go English 12 as an example, they cannot take that as a dual enrollment class because that would be taking seats away from our teachers here within the building. So any course that we offer here at Dartmouth High School, they are not allowed to take at a college campus.
And about how many students a year do dual enrollment?
So it fluctuates from year to year depending on what students. Approximately right now, for the spring semester, we have about five students taking courses. In the fall, there was a transition period with Bristol Community College and that transition was very rocky. And because students fund dual enrollment courses, so families are responsible to pay for those courses as well as books, any types of fees on the college campus, it is a cost to them. So we have had since COVID, less students taken dual enrollment courses.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
To clarify, Community College is free for students with a high school diploma. It's not free for dual enrollment students, so that's the difference. And the transition she's talking about is, I think Bristol Community College found out mid-August that every tuition was free. So that's kind of the transition period we were talking about.
Mr. Nunes, before we hop over to you, I do have a question over here from our student rep, if that's okay.
Hi. So from the student's perspective, I just want to make some comments. Postgraduate feedback, that's really great. We really appreciate that because there's a lot of college kids now that give us advice. They're like, wow, we should have done this in high school. So to have like sports officiating or those classes offered is a really great opportunity. To also comment on that, sports officiating, I've had really good feedback from that. So that's been great. A question I have is, so for me, I'm a senior. My freshman year, our requirements were one credit of art and one credit of computer science. And I know that's changed with the program. But I was wondering, this might be a question for Guidance, but is there a place in Guidance where they're going to like recommend years that we're supposed to be like taking those courses? Because I know when I sat down in Guidance, they said, hey, like, this is how to efficiently get those credits over with or here's how to plan out your four years and not try to cram those credits in. Because I know a lot of students have that problem senior, and I know that's a problem for you guys with the overabundance of kids in classes in these electives because they haven't taken it until their senior year. So I was just wondering, with those two credits that I had and now this .5 credit, is there going to be some sort of pathway that you guys are recommending to these freshmen on when they should be taking these courses?
Thanks, Haley. So each Guidance Councilor should be meeting yearly with every single student. So when course selection comes out, not only do you do your course selection with you as a student, your family, you're hearing from your teachers, the Guidance Councilor should also be meeting with students. And each individual student should have a four-year plan. So if a student comes in in grade nine and says, "I already know what I want to do. I want to go to college. I want to be an engineering major." They start writing that information. And then when they meet with them a sophomore year, they follow up. Are your plans still the same? Looks like you're doing well. And also during those times, they'll advise as to levels. So if they see you're doing really well and you're only in CCR courses, they might recommend you for an honors. They might recommend you for an advanced placement course to challenge yourself. But through that all, they're also going to be trying to manage the type of caseload of courses you're having. Because not only is academics a priority, but outside of life of Dartmouth High School is a priority and social, emotional well-being. We have seen a substantial impact in regards to anxiety. And it impacts students with course selection, caseload, homework, you name it, it can continue to go on. So the Guidance Councilor, based on each grade level, will be advising you. Right now, it looks like you have a lot of electives. Why don't we add in your UA course, your Unified Arts? Why don't we, you know, take out the second science elective and potentially add in your computer science requirement? So that way, when it comes to senior year, you're not bogged down with nothing but requirements. And you're able to have some choice and enjoy the last few months of your senior year.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Haley.
The one other thing I want to add, too, is we offer PSATs for our sophomores and our juniors. And the reason why we offer it for our sophomores is to really get that AP potential list building so we can really see, are you a student that might not realize that you might have an AP offering? Or you might not, you might not even realize that yourself. And we have the data to say, I think you should push yourself and you should really work towards it. The last thing I don't want to see is a student their senior year taking five AP classes because I feel like that avalanche is always behind them their senior year, right? As they're trying to build up those AP courses. So we want to spread those out as for our students as much as possible.
Mr. Nunes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. You were talking about the additional English reading and writing classes type of deal. You know, do you have an idea how many you need, how many students you need to run? Has that been thought about? I mean, do you get five? Do you need five? Do you need 10?
Five would not be the number.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
I don't like putting a number on something in a sense of like, I don't want to be like held like you said 14 or whatever and we run it because we might have an offering at 14 or we might not. It really comes down to what the schedule can build and is there availability for it. We really play with it. But we do want to see over a decent percentage of our students in a comfortable side. We don't want our schedule to be logged in because we're running a class at five if we have to. Yep, go ahead.
And we also will look at the core content graduation requirements. So English IX, English X, the advanced placement courses. And we will look at those courses first as the priority. And how many sections do we need? What's the amount of students? Because if we have, as an example, AP literature and we have 35 students wanting the course, we are going to run two sections of that. So that might result in us not being able to offer electives. So again, the core content graduation requirements are our first priority. And then if there are spots, then we look at the electives.
Good. Thank you for the number of the AP classes, I know. I always enjoy listening to, you know, the discussion on it. Do we know how many of our students are taking AP classes offhand?
I don't, but I can get you the number. I know Ross has done, Dr. Tebow, I apologize, has done a lot of work to build those numbers up for our students. I don't want to give you the percentage because I think I have a number in my head, but I will get you that number, I promise. So. So it is a significant percentage of our student population.
Enjoy looking at, you know, as a scholarship chairman for a different organization, enjoy looking at all the transcripts and seeing, you know, Johnny and Suzie, you know, got 15, 30 credits, you know, blown out a semester and then some, so.
The beautiful thing of our offering is, is that we try to hit all of the modalities of learning, right? So we have the AP Arts as one side, we have the AP Computer Science, we have the AP Maths, and we have the AP, like, the social sciences, you know. So we really tried to hit all of those different types of learners, which offers, which does expand our potential of students that can have it, right? I could have never took an AP Art Studio, but I definitely took AP Chem when I was back here, so.
And the last, nice to see the sports officials and such, you know. I agree, it's getting harder and harder to get officials and, you know, tough job. But is that done here or the students going out? When is, is it, is it like an after-school thing type of?
Nope, we have two sections, Ms. Seamus runs it. It's part online, part in action, so they'll do some of the online work. That's like the quote-unquote ref reps program that we use. And the other side is actually living it, so you might like, you might watch a soccer match or you might watch something from the lens of a, an official.
Do they, like, when the boys, you know, if they were studying to be basketball officials, would they per se be at a practice to, you know, take an idea as to what it looks like, you know, almost like real time?
It's more in PE classes that they use it for. They use that time because it is during the school day. I love that idea and I might kind of help support that. I'm sure either Coach Gilbert or Coach Simonetti would actually love that extra support on their courts as well too. So I definitely think there's some offerings there.
Okay, thank you. I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
Much appreciated.
Semaral?
Oh, the benefit or the curse of going last, is that every question is answered. Haley so eloquently tapped into my question that you responded to related to course selection and academic planning. So thank you for that. And then I guess I just have a, just a, one thing I will say that I just appreciate is that we do have a pathway for students to take a world language every year that they're here. Love to expand that list. I know we've had other languages and that comes with its own, its own difficulties. But I do appreciate that there is a pathway for that for all four years. So I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add, great presentation. What I really appreciate from you and your team, Mr. Shea, is the student piece, right? The student that you're, you're listening, you mentioned, I don't know if it was you or Bridget that mentioned that you're, you're listening to students that have gone through Dartmouth High School, graduated and coming back. They're in college now and they're saying, hey, wait a minute, you should be, I think it was art two, right? For architectural students, that this is something that really should be offered at the high school level. So to me, I think that's huge, the student's voice, I think is huge. And I'm glad to see that you and your team are, are listening to that and listening to that piece because I think it'll go a long way to growing our pathways, not just the pathways program, but growing our, you know, all of our programs, especially, it's amazing to me, the AP offerings, for sure. My daughter's actually hoping to graduate a semester early, even though she only had six, six or nine credits, I think. She was able to transfer those in and that's, she's a couple of summer classes and she'll be able to graduate a semester early because of those AP classes that she took here at Dartmouth High School. So, no, I'm very happy with, with the momentum that's going on here at Dartmouth High School. And I think, I speak for my colleagues when I say, well done. And I think right now, all we need at this point is a vote for the, not so much the program of studies, but for the graduation requirements. Questions on that?
Good.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Nope, that's fine.
Rolls off your tongue, that rolls off your tongue.
I was just gonna say, yeah, okay, make a, make a motion where you approve the graduation requirements as presented for the, under the program of studies.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Coughlin. On the motion, any discussion? Jay Harrington, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you both for your presentation.
I do want to say thank you to our lead teachers as well. Bridget meets with each one of them individually and really they, they, you talk about the feedback. They get the feedback from the staff, they get the feedback from the students, that's where it all begins. And it's, it's a real true collaborative process, and Bridget's got a really great system that works for this. So it's, it's, it's a labor of love for a lot of people and I appreciate all, everyone that helped put this together. I just get to talk about it, everyone else gets to do all the hard work on it. So thank you everyone for the vote, and I appreciate everyone that worked on this document. Thank you.
Thank you both. Moving right along, next up, under old business, proposed FY '26 budget, some further discussion. Not sure if I should, should I turn it right over to?
I think, I'll just.
Dr. Saban McGuire?
Yes, that would be great, thank you so much. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight and spoke about the budget. I mean, these are real issues that we as a community, a school community certainly, but a community at large are facing, and we're facing it together. And having folks come out and make the statements that you're making are not only true and in support of the work that we do every day, but very much appreciated. And so I want to start out by just saying, thanks for coming out because it really is a lousy night out there. And so we appreciate you showing up. So multiple perspectives on the town's budget and our shared financial challenge, and we all heard about that this evening. School costs do, do continue to rise, and we have acknowledged that, that this puts pressure on our town's resources. However, I think we should be really clear, the issue is not that our spending is out of line. The issue is that our costs are increasing, and that is due to factors that are truly beyond our control. Rising special education expenses, state mandates, increasing transportation costs, and the competitive need to retain, yes, retain our quality educators are, are driving our budget pressures. These are not discretionary choices. They are necessary investments in our students and the required obligations under state and federal law. Every school district in Massachusetts right now is facing the same challenges. We recognize that funding is limited, and we remain committed to working collaboratively with the town to find responsible and sustainable solutions. But we also must ensure Dartmouth students receive the education that they deserve. And that's what we've heard other folks come up and speak about this evening. This underfunding our schools has long-term consequences, not just for our students, but for this entire community, including property values and including economic growth. This is not just a school department problem, it is a town-wide discussion about priorities and how we invest in Dartmouth's future. We welcome open dialogue, as we did this evening, and collaboration as we work together toward a solution. And I know tonight, Mr. Kylie's going to present and talk about some of the challenges and also sort of the collaboration that we have on an ongoing basis here in town.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. While Mr. Galishaw puts up what I'm gonna talk about, I think in your comments tonight, I think one common thread was to try and figure out a way that we could have a sustainable budget pattern moving forward. One, one thing came up on, at the March 6 Finance Committee meeting that was interesting. We, in our budget process, have talked about the idea of trying to gradually lessen reliance on reserves and particularly our school choice reserves, which we're really using to balance our budget. But that night at the Finance Committee, a Finance Committee member brought up that topic and made a statement about potentially finding a way to do that. So in the spirit of that, I created this scenario in which we essentially string out school choice reserves, but that it would require the town to commit an additional amount of money to us over the next five years. So in order to find a way to match school choice expenditures with school choice revenues, we would need the town to commit to fund our, our school budget an additional $245,000 a year for the next five years. So each year, over and above our regular operating budget, we would need $245,000 additional. That would result, and I know the, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but.
Excuse me, Mr. Galishaw, could we maybe zoom in on that slide a little bit? I see a lot of squinting eyes, even my own.
But what it shows is that after the five years, all of the additional costs over and above $700,000 would have been reincorporated into the Dartmouth Public Schools operating budget. And then after that five years, the approximate level of expenditure in the school choice program would be somewhere around $700,000, which is consistent with our revenue in that program. So by thinking about an increase of $245,000, which is about .24% of the town's overall budget, we could solve the salary situation and the summer and after-school program situation in which we are funding using one-time resources in school choice. It doesn't mean that it's gonna solve all our problems. It does mean that if this were considered by the town, it would solve one problem, one pretty big problem, which was created by the Esser Cliff that's resulting in other communities laying off staff right now. Some of our other South Coast communities and throughout the state, there are communities that are laying off staff because there isn't a source of funding anymore that can support them, the positions that they added. Now, we were fortunate that we had some school choice reserves and were able to do that, you know, thoughtfully and spend those. But obviously, we know that that's not sustainable long-term, unless the town were willing to try and solve a problem. So the only other way that I can figure out solving this problem is either via an override or cutting staff. So for a .24% budget increase, budget increase for the town, it would seem that it would be logical to at least have this conversation as a possible solution. So that's, that was, this was shared with the Finance Committee member who, who brought it up. And I've also shared it with interim town administrator Gary Carrero. And I think that there's been an interest in hearing what the school committee thinks about this idea as a potential solution. And then there may be some further consideration at the town level for this.
Well, thank you for bringing this to, to our attention, Mr. Kylie, and for the Finance Committee member for bringing this up and sharing it and taking the initiative. So certainly appreciated. Just, just a couple of thoughts of my own, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. First of all, I do want to recognize those of you who spoke this evening in regards to class sizes and class sizes, especially at the elementary level, you know, increasing up towards that 24 mark. I agree, I'm only, I'm only speaking on my behalf, I'm not speaking for anyone else in the committee, but I think that class sizes at the elementary level of 24 is too high. I really do. I, I would love to see average class sizes of 18 to 20, especially depending on those grade levels. There's no doubt about it. However, the financial reality is, I don't know how we would come up with the money to, you know, get those class sizes to where they need to be across the district. Because while we're reducing some, some FTEs in some schools, to really what we're doing is where, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, where we're averaging out across the district for equitable person, for equality purposes, that all, that all of our elementary schools are averaging the same numbers. Because in my opinion, it's certainly not fair to have one school in one end of the town have more in average class size that's higher than schools at the other end of the town. But if, if I could have it my way, I would have 18 to 20, you know, depending on the, the grade level, for sure. So I certainly, I hear, I hear those comments, I respect those comments. I wish, I really, really wish we could do something with that. I do know, based on where we are in ESP spending in the district, we are 1.1 or 1.2 below the state average on what we're hiring for FTEs for ESPs. That's a problem. I think we could be doing more to support our classroom teachers, absolutely. It's just where is the money gonna come from? We, we know that smaller class sizes and that extra class support through these ESP educational support professionals makes a difference. But it comes down to what does this community want? And if we want to get together and if we want to do an override at some point, I think, I think that that's where we may have to go. But I think the solution that Mr. Kylie has put forward at least helps with the deficit in not relying so much, really takes us, takes our reliance off of school choice over the next, through, you know, FY '30 will ultimately be off of it. Because when I voted in school choice 10 years ago now, or whenever it was, I envisioned school choice being that mechanism to fund those after-school buses at the elementary level that we still don't have. To fund all the extra things that the school department can't get into its operating budget. And I never intentioned school choice to be providing, right now, 11 FTEs worth of salaries. So I'm hoping through progressive dialogue with town leaders, with elected leaders, with appointed officials, that we can make some headway, but I think moving forward, we need an override at the end of the day. But I do like, I do like this solution. I think a gradual pullback from school choice is probably the right way to go. And if we can get the support of the Finance Committee in the Select Board, you know, and if Gary, our interim town administrator can make it work, I, I think that would certainly be the way to go. I will also say that after thinking about it and running the numbers and looking at the comps, I personally, based on all of the cuts that we're looking to make, I cannot support a $120,000 human resource position director at this time. This district certainly needs one, I have, there's no doubt about that. I do know that the town is bringing someone on soon. I did have a conversation with Mrs. Heidi Brooks. And, you know, I'm not in the operations, I'm only in policy and budget, but I'd love to see some kind of collaboration between this school department and the town with an HR position. At this time though, it's certainly needed. We're very fortunate to have who we have doing what, doing what they do in human resources. But I cannot, I cannot consciously approve that kind of salary when we're cutting FTEs. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues. So, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Anyone that wants to go?
Want me to start?
Wherever you want.
I just, I don't disagree with you. I actually agree with everything you've said. I think this is one mechanism to sort of narrow down. My computer died, and so I note to self, use Google. And I can open my phone and use my Google, but I was working on a Word document, tallying up all the wonderful quotes and really important messages that folks said during the public hearing. You know, one in particular was that school choice, you know, is the closest thing to be that rainy day fund or to, you know, and certainly getting away from funding those staff positions is important. It's really critical. You know, like, over and over in my head, you know, we're here because of students. We're here to make decisions based on what's important to us in our community. And thinking about, you know, makes me think about the larger community needs to really sit with what kind of a community do we want in the future? Do we want one that supports and values education less? I certainly don't want that to be my community in the future. I certainly am here for all students. And I do appreciate Mr. Kylie for taking, I didn't mean to point anyone out in the crowd, but one good idea to make this work and to get ourselves to a point where we're not reliant on that, on those funds, and that they can be used for some other important initiatives that have, you know, been put on the back burner as a result. So, that's my, that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaro. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I had a conversation with Mr. Kylie about this when he showed it to me. And I, you know, wholeheartedly support it. You know, when you think about it, it's 459, almost 1.2, you know, over the next five years type of deal when it rolls up. It takes the pressure off the school choice and not, you know, exhaust it type of deal. Again, we all know that, you know, this is something that runs every year, school choice. It's a vote every year. So, it, you know, it could be here today and gone tomorrow. And then, we'd really be in trouble. But, I mean, the other thing, too, it's, you know, and this, I know I've said this before, and the kind, you know, take something from the state. I mean, we're $9 million less than state average type of deal. I mean, God, if you took a third of that, okay, it'd be $3 million and all of these wonderful little issues that we have are gone type of deal. You know, I had a discussion with a state senator a while back. And, you know, his comment to me was, oh, there's nothing I can do about it. You need to talk to this state senator type of deal. So, it's like, okay, fine. I haven't seen that person to talk to him. But when I catch him, I will bend his ear. I assure you of that. But I think this, my only concern, my only concern with this, and I think this is great, and thinking about it and everything else, is, you know, are we putting a Band-Aid on the problem? Okay? Are we just, okay?
Yeah, it's a fair point.
Just my thoughts is I put my governmental and accounting background hat on type of deal. And unfortunately, to disagree with you, I think we need the HR person. That's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
The democracy. Thank you. Yes. Mary, and Mrs. Beckman.
I mean, I think this is, I think we should look at this as a start. And also, what we're willing to do as a school department for the town, and then ask the town what they're willing to do. But I do think this is a start. I am one of the big supporters of an HR person. I think it protects everyone, employees, the district. I think it lowers risk. But I think I'm going to agree with Mr. Chair and say, maybe we look at that again next year.
Ms. Coffler?
Thank you. So, I love this idea. You know, it doesn't solve all our problems. But it makes them smaller. It makes the cliff smaller when we get there. But in listening to comments earlier tonight, I agree with most of them. You know, class size, you know, getting rid of teachers, whether it's by attrition or what, it's not good. I agree, our benefits packet isn't that great. I do disagree about administration costs rising and that being at odds with everything else. Our administration costs are 33% lower than average. So, yes, people have gotten raises, but we're still way below average. I do believe that we have all kinds of requests that are unmet, that are actually needs. But I feel that it would be irresponsible to put those items in our current budget because right now, the town cannot afford it. They can afford this, I believe, and I hope that they see that they can afford this. But in order to budget for the requests that we can't meet, I think, and to keep the teacher-student ratio at a healthy level, to keep class sizes smaller, we will need an override. But we can't put those items in our budget until the town has the money. So, if we have, as a town, believe that small class sizes are important, if we as a town believe that our teachers and other school staff deserve better benefits, other town employees deserve better benefits, we need to first tax ourselves more. And when I first came on the school board, all I heard was, this town will not pass an override. So, I think everyone's been very timid about it. But since I've been here, I have heard from the people who think the town will pass an override. So, to wrap all that up, I hope that the town will incorporate this into our budget. I think that because of where we are financially, we should put off getting an HR person. I think it's a responsible budget that we are putting forward.
Thank you, everyone, for the well-thought-out discussion. I guess my question to Dr. Saban McGuire, Mr. Kylie, is next steps? If this is something that sounds like the committee would be willing to entertain approving a budget with the reduction, with the $245,000 reduction out of school choice and with that money going into the operating budget? I guess a little caveat with that, and this is just me spitballing here, is I'm going to go back to the fact that school choice was for actually originally, for extras, for our rainy day fund. I don't want to see a scenario next year that we desperately need a one-on-one ESP or we desperately need staff to help our students. Whether that's, you know, we have a student that comes into the district that was unexpected, that has needs, and, you know, we're putting off hiring an educational support professional or a one-on-one because of money. I don't want to hear that, especially when we have this money in school choice. I would rather us spend the money in school choice right at the time it's needed than to defer a position that is desperately needed at the classroom level. And you understand, I guess, what I'm saying? Is that the money is available there, especially if we can get the $245,000 out of school choice. Please, 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 if the money's available and a position is desperately needed, that's what the money's there for. Support, I want to make sure that, and I have no doubt we're not, I don't, but I want to make sure we are supporting our classroom teachers and supporting our educators first and foremost. So...
And if we have to do that, you know, and use it out of school choice in '26, then the '27 budget, we roll that into the budget because we have that issue. And say, here's why we have to have that.
Agreed. I guess from my perspective, I just want the administration to know that...
Yeah, no.
I think that, I'm speaking for myself, and correct me if I'm wrong from anyone else, that that money's there. If you need it, use it to support students.
Understood.
So, next steps, Mr. Kylie?
Well, I think that the interim town administrator would really, as I said, did want to hear from the school committee and what, you know, what the plan was from us. So, I think I'll communicate that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And ask that there's consideration from finance committee, select board, to support this. We normally would vote our budget, the school committee would vote our budget at the next school committee meeting. So, there's not a lot of time between now and then. Now, technically, we could make a change or vote, we could make a change to our budget right up until town meeting. Obviously, we want the correct, ideally, the correct number to be on the Schedule A and in the town meeting warrant. So, there's some timing issues there. But I think it all starts with having a conversation tomorrow and trying to move this forward and seeing, you know, how that works out. So...
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Nunes? Would it help if there was a motion that we accepted this revision? And he, when he makes the presentation to Mr. Carrero and it gets funneled down, they can say, this is...
Right.
Per se, versus it being a consensus, it was a vote?
But we haven't approved the initial budget.
No, 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 no. This schedule, the use of school choice.
Okay. Yep.
The adjustment, the adjustment on the school choice.
Do you think that would...
That would, sure.
Can't hurt?
Yeah, it can't hurt at all.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the adjustments to school choice as presented by Mr. Kylie, using $245,000 rolled up the next six years as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mrs. Amaro. Do we have that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that.
No problem.
And I think, just to close up here, I think that we do need an override. I think we need to look at what we truly need in this district. Maybe it's coming together with a group. I'm not sure what the answer is. That's something I can talk about with the administration. But I think ultimately, we do need an override in this town. It sounds like there's growing support for it. So, thank you all. All right. Next up, superintendent's update. Dr. Saban McGuire.
So, I just wanted to share with the committee that I had the opportunity to attend the 2025 AASIA National Conference, which is a conference that brings together superintendents and school leaders, really, from across the country. And I find that to be really validating in that with the issues and the challenges we're facing here in Massachusetts, I would say that there are similar challenges going on across the entire country. And just having that opportunity to talk with colleagues at that level has been, is really important for me. And when I think about, you know, what do you go to conferences for? Will you go to connect your work to the work of your school district? And some of the things that I was able to spend time in, learn about, and attend sessions on were connected to health and wellness, student well-being. There was a session that I think is really important for us as we have these kind of discussions. And it's about, one session on restoring trust, restoring public trust in education. And so, those conversations are happening across the country. And those are the kinds of sessions that I, along with other colleagues, were able to attend. There was quite a bit of focus on AI. Really interesting in the way that superintendents and school districts and teachers are using AI in a way that's productive and actually helping them in their work. And there was a session on strategic planning that myself and my team were going to meet with a group to talk about, not that we haven't already obviously engaged in strategic planning. But one of the things we're looking toward is, how are we going to be able to articulate clearly to the committee and to the community what our progress is toward meeting the goals and objectives in a way that's really clear for folks who are interested in our progression of the initiatives that we've identified? There was a session on just building stakeholder buy-in. Again, really timely for the kinds of conversations that we're having here this evening. So, if we enter, if the community enters into dialogue around an eventual override, there is going to need to be a real effort around how you organize, around buying stakeholder, to make sure that you're, you have a plan in place in order to do that. So, next, I'm going to invite Dr. Tebald up because he's going to talk to you about, there's so much going on. He had given me a list of talking points for what's happening at the 612 level. And I invited him up to have this discussion with the committee himself.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So, I just have to say that Haley stole quite a bit of what I was planning to talk about. So, thank you, Haley. But while I was standing back there with Mr. Rossi, he did say he, you know, gets a kick out of how young people use their phones to give updates, which I never do. But I haven't had a chance to print this, so I will today as well. So... The first piece I just wanted to share was our high school math pilot is continuing. On March 6th and 7th, Carnegie coach was here and engaged in a lesson study protocol with several of our math teachers where they came in. And on the Thursday, they co-planned together. And on the Friday, they co-taught the lesson, the teacher and the math coach from Carnegie. Also met with our lead teacher, Mr. Lauer. And that plan, that professional development and support is just part of the plan to support this pilot. It will continue in a couple of weeks when the coach returns once again. And also, we'll be having some teams visit districts that are a little bit further ahead in implementation of Carnegie Math. And the idea there is hopefully to provide teachers opportunities to talk with other teachers who have lived this experience and can kind of hear, you know, what, you know, the struggles that they went through and how they came through the other side and how it is working for them. So, that's ongoing work. Haley mentioned the TEDx DHS event, which was phenomenal. Hopefully, everyone got to see some of it. But it really, that's a tremendous event that every year, Mrs. Souza and Mrs. True organize and do a tremendous amount of work. And they certainly deserve, you know, a shout-out. But also want to highlight the partnership between the DHSTV Media Production Program that, you know, streams the event live, and also DCTV. That partnership is invaluable to our school, provides tremendous opportunities for our secondary students as well. The NEAS Collaborative Visit took place over March 13th and 14th. And afterwards, they debriefed with Mrs. Larson, who served as the chair of the NEAS Collaborative Visit and the self-study process. who served as the chair of the NEASC Collaborative Visit and the self-study process. And again, a lot of credit to her. She was tremendous in organizing and leading all of the work also. You know, a lot of credit to our faculty. Most folks don't understand all of the work that goes into a NEASC visit. And it's done by the educators who are in the building, who collect evidence. They review it. They review the standards for NEASC and they produce a self-study report. The collaborative visiting team was made up of six educators from across the Commonwealth. They came in and pretty much validated the work that the Dartmouth High School faculty had done. And they did share, before they left, and there'll be a formal report, but they shared with Mr. Shea, Mrs. Larson, and the rest of the administrative team here at the high school, they shared some strengths. And they included things like our students. The team interacted with our students in a number of ways, both through formal interviews as well as through student-led tours when they were here over the two-day visit. And they could not stop talking enough about how impressive our students were, how courteous they were, how informative they were. And so that's always nice to hear. High-quality instruction that takes place in the building was cited as a strength as well. So again, that's credit to our teachers and our educators. Another strength was structures that support that high-quality instruction, including things like common planning time built into the master's schedule as well as the PACE period were highlighted. They also highlighted building infrastructure and funding for the infrastructure improvement. They specifically noted the recently redesigned and revamped LMC. Also, they cited as a strength the TV media studio, talking about how it was, you know, professional quality. And again, provides our students with a tremendous experience. They also cited, as you heard from Mr. Shea and Mrs. De Silva today, as a strength, the variety of offerings that we have, not just for the 27 AP programs, but again, the clubs and activities that we have after school, the athletics, the music programs. Our Atlas program was cited as a strength as well as our Unified program. So really, you know, I think that the visit from the NEASC team was and should be viewed as very validating. They also identified before they left some recommended areas for us to focus on as we continue to improve our school and our school community. That included things like, you know, utilizing the Dartmouth High School Student Handbook to facilitate clear expectations and transparent communication around expectations for students. They recommended that continue to work around curriculum development and revision and to ensure alignment to the newly developed portrait of a learner. Finally, developing, they recommended developing a common grading practice with clear course expectations by department. So that departments have consistent grading practices. And then finally, they recommended to revisit and revise the comprehensive emergency management plan to ensure it's a document that's user-friendly and consistently updated. And so I share these because again, even with the recommended areas for growth, I find it validating because a number of those things are highlighted in our strategic plan as well as the school improvement plan that Mr. Shea presented a few meetings ago that was approved. So I think it just validates the work that's ongoing and that's already in process. And I think that that will be helpful as we continue to drive improvement efforts at the high school level. Another update I want to provide was Dartmouth Middle School just had an author visit last week. It was tremendous. The author was Dusty Bolling, who's an award-winning bestselling author of Insignificant Events in the Life of a Cactus, Momentous Events in the Life of a Cactus, 24 Hours in Nowhere, and several other books as well. But it was great to visit. Dr. Saban Maguire was with me when we visited, just to see the energy the author presented to each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth separately. But she also met in small groups with students who had the opportunity to purchase one of her books, one or more of her books, and have autographs and really to talk to the author. Beyond that, just the message of perseverance was one that should really resonate with our students as she talked about how many times she was rejected for a book idea. Over, I think she said over 100 times.
It was 100 times.
Before she was finally approved for a book. So the final piece, again, a shout out to Mrs. Souza, our world language lead teacher. We have upcoming world language PD. Regional, it's a regional PD event for Portuguese teachers. Finding content-specific professional development's always a challenge, particularly in world language. But this is the third year now in a row where we'll host, Dartmouth High School will host PD regionally for Portuguese teachers from across the Commonwealth. And again, Mrs. Souza works closely with the Portuguese consulate to make that available at no cost to our educators. So we're tremendously proud of that as well. I think that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Tebow. I told you he had a lot to share. Been very busy. So just moving on to budget, capital improvement, and HR. I think that we've talked enough about budget for this evening. And we can put capital improvement for our next meeting. But I did want to mention to you, as far as in our HR world, the interviews for assistant principals at the Potter and the Quinn and the interviews for the associate principals at the middle and the high school are ongoing. As a matter of fact, I think the first rounds are all done as of this afternoon. I can't, again, I can't thank folks enough because this has been a lot of hard work. And our educators are part of the process. And I thank them for giving up their time. Certainly, Katie and Ross, along with Peter Rossi, Ryan Shea, Audra Thomas, Melissa McHenry, all of them are part of this process. But also, we have a good number of teachers who have been part of this first round. And so we're looking forward to hopefully completing some of the final interviews by the end of this week and should be ready to share some candidates or some of the folks that have been selected for the positions, really within the next week. And you know, I'm always going to give the shameless plug for monitor substitute teachers, ESPs. I don't think we need any custodians right now. I think. Yes. So that's pretty amazing. We're excited about that. I'm going to echo what Haley talked about as far as family, under family and community engagement, and just talk about Dartmouth's finest competition, which was really an incredible showcase of student talent, school spirit, and community engagement, because there's the community engagement piece. Beyond just our students, the place was truly packed. And I'll tell you, the crowd was really into the performances. I don't know if you've gotten a chance to see it if you were there. Wonderful. If not, you should maybe check it out on DCTV because I did watch some of the clips because I had to share some of that with some of my colleagues who weren't able to attend. And it was really incredibly fun. I mean, we saw music, we heard music, saw dance, and there was a wrestling match. And it was a very realistic wrestling match to the point where as a superintendent, I was sitting in the audience enjoying it and at the same time dreading it and wishing that it was over. I mean, there was a performance of Green Man Group. So for those of you who are familiar with Blue Man Group, we had students who performed. And they were incredibly believable. And I have a feeling if the producers of Blue Man Group saw our students, they might actually recruit them to perform. It was just hysterical. But really, the level of talent was extraordinary. Kids from just all different, you know, different backgrounds up there on stage. And when you hear them share with you what the importance of that experience was in bringing together folks that they might not normally interact with, it was pretty powerful. So I loved it. I thought it was just, it was so much fun. And so if you haven't watched it yet, please go ahead and take a look at DCTV. It's worth your time. Under Safe and Supportive Schools, I just highlight the work being done, being led by Kim Redlon. She has reestablished the district and in turn, what will be school-based crisis teams. We're looking forward to really putting those teams in place in a way that we can see that there are consistent, there are just consistent processes and procedures in place. And she has been bringing groups together to get, to put that work into place. And she'll be sharing some of the outcomes of her work at some upcoming meetings. Dr. Tebow already talked about NEASC, but I will say, I did have the opportunity to talk to a couple of the interviewers. And they really did highlight our students. And just folks, one person who's been, I think he said at over 100 NEASC visits. I don't know how many he said, but it was close to that. And he said that he, this, he had never met a group of kids who were just so incredibly engaging and that he was incredibly impressed by what their display of school pride and their respect for one another and just the overall atmosphere here at Dartmouth High School. So that was pretty impressive to hear. And we look forward to getting the report, final report, and sharing it with the committee. So thank you.
Busy couple of weeks. Thank you, Dr. Saban Maguire. So next up, report of the chair. Just have a couple of things. I have a letter here dated March 17th from Superintendent Michael Watson of New Bedford Vocational School, letting us know that Dartmouth's reps, Dr. Cindy Marlin, her term is up May 1st of 2025. And she is seeking reappointment. So I would just ask that this get put on to the next school committee agenda for consideration. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nunes, that this is a, is this a joint appointment?
This is, it's the chairman of the school committee, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and the town moderator.
Perfect. So I'm, I don't see, I don't see a CC on this. It was CC to the other two individuals. But I will certainly reach out to the select board and our town moderator. But I know typically, this committee will take a vote. It's been past practice and not just the school committee chair saying yes, yes or no.
It's a vote of, per se, each one. And, you know, then the chair and the three get together and hopefully it's all.
Perfect.
Perfect.
So if we could just add this to the next school committee agenda, Ms. Cantor, that would be great. And I will reach out to find out or just put the select board and the town moderator on notice if they hadn't received this. I would also like to see, I don't think we've had our annual meeting with our reps and Mr. Watson from New Bedford Voke. I'm very curious about the admission policy, the updated admission policy at New Bedford Voke. It is my understanding that it's really just a complete lottery now. And that it's all three communities, New Bedford, Fairhaven, and Dartmouth, that just get put in and it's a complete lottery. My thing is, is that there should be a certain amount of slots allotted to Dartmouth students. There should be a certain amount of slots allotted to Fairhaven students because New Bedford is quite large compared to the towns of Fairhaven and Dartmouth. So my concern is that Dartmouth students are not going to have a fair share at getting admitted.
At vocational education.
At a vocational education. When you, when you just put them into one pot and you have, I don't know, tens of, 10,000 students that are currently enrolled in New Bedford Public Schools. And how many of those are eighth graders that want to go to New Bedford Voke? So I just think it creates an unfair advantage. So I would love to hear from them. So I don't know if we can reach out to our, our New Bedford Voke reps and see if we can get them on the schedule for one of our next meetings. And that's all I have. Mrs. Amaral?
Well, I have some good news.
We love good news.
Well, it's good news to me. And good news for the community. So I, as everyone knows, probably sick of hearing, I have had the fortune of each year being voted in and chairing the Dartmouth Special Ed Parent Advisory Council since I think 1962. No. Since 2012. And it has been a pleasure. It aligned really nicely with my, most of that time with my professional role that at one point had more flexibility than I have now. And I have three children. And my child that brought me to work in the field and also sign up for this role is aging out of the school system. He will, January, he will be turning 22, which is for students who do need that entitlement. Until then, we call it a cliff. It's another cliff. I've been preparing for it for years. Won't talk about the federal updates of the government. But neither here nor there, I received an email out of the blue early March from someone who thought perhaps they wanted more information about stepping into the role that I resigned pre-COVID, but remained in because I am passionate about the work. And so I am happy to, so I reviewed our bylaws and talked with our special ed leadership. And this person, who, poor thing, I've already connected her to my statewide contacts. I have her on a listserv, so I don't know if she realizes what she signed up for. But I'm here to share, this can be found, I think, on the backpack, that on April 10th, the meeting notice has gone out that on April 10th, 6 o'clock at Quinn in the community room, we will have a a meeting. Specifically, I reviewed the bylaws because there's somebody interested in the vacancy. Get it while the getting's good. This person, there'll be a vote for this person, who then will be able to run with it, work with the school department, update the bylaws. And then I would assume in late spring, hold a larger sort of election for all of the seats. Deb August, she's a treasurer. She's been a treasurer. She's been part of this as long as I have. And so reinstalling her or in anyone else who's interested. And it's a great opportunity for parents to learn, collaborate with the school department, learn about special education. So I'll be doing a little presentation on, I need readers to, the purpose and the role of a CPAC as it's written in Mass General Law. And then we'll have networking opportunity, refreshments, some welcome remarks from our special ed leadership, and then a nomination and a vote to fill that board chair vacancy. And then a meeting closed. So April 10th, 6 o'clock, Quinn School. Be there or be square. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Funny, you were talking about New Bedford Voke and I had it as one of, I can't remember the last time we saw minutes. So can we? Again, you know, I'm not trying to hop on a dead, beat a dead horse, but it would be nice to, you know, see the minutes from grading in New Bedford Voke type of deal. So.
Absolutely.
Standard Times is starting to, or has been representing student athletes for fall sports and such. And our boy soccer player was the superstar of the year. So congratulations there. Congrats, and I don't normally mention names, but congrats to Kat Cheeseborough for her over 2,000 points that she scored. I was lucky enough to be here both for that game and some of the other ones. Unfortunately, they, they lost that night to Whitman-Hanson. But also too, for winning the Dave Cowens Award as the outstanding female player. So that's, that was good there. This coming week, this coming Saturday, our color guard, both JV and Varsity are competing up in Salem for the NSBA finals. Our color guard leaves next Tuesday, February, April 1st for Dayton for WGI. That's a long trip. The percussion leaves on the 9th. And the NSBA finals for percussion is the next, not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday here at the high school, starting at 1 o'clock. And Dartmouth is on at 6:30 and the awards are done at 7:30. So that's what's going on in music and everything else right now. on in music and everything else right now.
Thank you very much for your update. Mr. Nunes, anyone else? That is all I have. Next regularly-scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is scheduled for Monday, April 14th at 6:00 PM in the Dartmouth High School Library Media Center, which is right here. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining where an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position, Dartmouth Administrators Association and Dartmouth Educators Association. In addition, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation where an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position, not to reconvene into open session. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Beckwith on the motion for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Kathleen Ammaral?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Mary Beckwith?
Yes.
Beth Coughlin?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful night, everyone.